I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which I stand, one nation under our power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to this record session of Goldendale City Council for March 1st, 2021. Before we have the rule call, I'd like to ask our Chief Jay Huntsleker to, Chief, please to please introduce our newest officer here at Goldendale.
Yes, with great pleasure is, I'd like to introduce Mark Scott. He's our lateral hire. He started last week on the 22nd. I'm gonna let him tell you a little, he can tell you a little bit about himself, and then we're gonna cut him loose so he can get home because he's worked all day. Mark?
Thanks, Ken. Chief Huntsleker noted, my name's Mark Scott. I'm a lateral officer from Wasco County Sheriff's Office where I spent the last almost nine years. I have quite a bit of law enforcement experience since 2010. I was a defensive tactic instructor, a training officer, reserve coordinator, and the physical agility instructor. I have a large family. I have eight children, six of which are still at home, four boys, four girls, three adopted children, beautiful wife, and we'll be moving up here in the near future, and so looking for a place that will accommodate such a large family, but we're very excited about being part of the team, part of the family.
Excellent. Welcome, Officer Mark Scott.
Thank you so much. I'm very excited to be here.
Very glad to have you here, very much so. We'll go now, Connie will give the rule call.
Julie?
I'm here.
Kevin?
Here.
Lauren?
Here.
Shannon?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
Phil?
I don't see Phil.
Myland?
Here.
Phil? Guess he's not there.
I think, not knowing for sure what Phil's schedule is like tonight, I'd like to have a motion to excuse him from this city council meeting. He may be here by the time we finish voting, but I think it would be considerate of him for him. Do we have a motion to excuse Phil Ontivettos?
Does this, does that make that motion?
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Phil Ontivettos from attending the record meeting of the Goldendale City Council for March 1st, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll go on with our rest of our agenda. We don't have a public hearing tonight under the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda for tonight. We have a motion.
So will.
Mrs. Julie, I'll second.
Thank you, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for tonight's program or session and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. We'll go on now to our presentations. Is Ruby Irving on the line? Good. She's gonna give us an update and explain a little bit about the solid waste issues for Clickatet County. She's the director of the solid waste department in Clickatet County. Ruby, please.
Yep, I'm here.
Thank you.
Hello, now?
Yeah, this is, this is fine.
Yeah, okay. My name is Ruby Irving. I'm the Director of Fall Waste. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I kinda wanted to make an attempt to be a little bit more regular in updates with the solid waste department and the cities so that you guys could be aware of, you know, what we're doing, what programs are being instituted, or what kind of ideas that we might have for, you know, say 2021 or 2022. And I think in the past, you know, we've just kind of forgotten that we're all a partner in this, and that our issues are your issues and your issues are our issues when it comes to solid waste, right? So to be able to have that communication, I thought would be really important to try to lock down, and now that we're in the Zoom culture, it makes it a lot easier for me to actually do that. Even though Goldendale would not be difficult for me to get to, Benjen and White Salmon, who I've already got an update with, that's a little bit more difficult to get to. So my body likes to be in bed at 9:00. If I were to go to those city council meetings, there's no way I'd get back by 9:00. So I really wanna take advantage of this opportunity to really make that connection with the city of Goldendale and the other two cities, and just with the community in general, so that we kind of all work together in this changing landscape of solid waste. I've invited my recycling coordinator, Michelle Mulroney, to kind of give you a little preview or an update of what we've done and what we're in the process of doing, and what you could look forward to in 2021 in terms of some of our programs. You know, like I said, this is a real changing environment right now with solid waste, especially with recycling, so we really wanna be able to interact with the community in order to navigate that, because it's really going to change before it's all said and done. So I think with that, I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Michelle so that she can give you that preview, and then we'll just go from there. Hi, Michelle.
Hi, everybody. This is Michelle Mulroney. Like Ruby said, I am the recycling coordinator. And over the past, I'd say probably year, a little short of, we've been working on this solid waste management plan specifically for the CROP. The CROP is the Contamination Reduction and Outreach Plan, and in the past, we have not had that as part of the management plan. That has changed in the guidelines, although we don't need the specific threshold to have a CROP. We are including that because we are right about getting to that threshold of, I think, 25,000 people. So the Contamination Reduction Plan involves a lot of the communities and getting everybody involved in trying to figure out how do we reduce the contamination everywhere, what are the contaminants that we need to reduce. So in the fall, we actually did a pretty large audit, and we went through all kinds of what you would call recycling. Some may call it trash. There was a lot of trash. The audit actually only showed about a 20% contamination rate. However, we're talking that's one season all by itself and during a pandemic. So in order to get a true estimate of where we're standing, we are gonna be doing audits through the spring and the summer. That should give us a better idea of kind of where we stand overall with the contamination rate. We're thinking 20% may be a little low on the overall. Goldendale in general was pretty dirty. The recycling items were correct. They actually didn't what we call wish cycle. They weren't wanting to recycle everything, but what they did recycle was a lot of food was all over it. There was a lot of liquid damage, so just very dirty recycling. That's something that we're gonna have to address because in order for us to be able to continue collecting recycling in our single stream recycling system, we have to have clean recycling. Ultimately, if it's costing us way more to recycle than what it's worth, then those markets are gonna close down. We can't provide good items. Nobody's gonna want them. So in order for us not to just send everything we have to our landfill that is in our county, we have to get our recycling under control. So that's something that we are gonna be working towards. For this next grant cycle, which I'm actually applying for here shortly, we are wanting to do some additional collection events in Goldendale. Goldendale has the transfer station, so it's super close. It is convenient for a lot of people, but not for everybody. There are still a lot of people that don't have trucks. They don't have a way to transport their yard waste. They don't have a way to transport hazardous waste or electronics, and all of those things just get thrown into the trash can, glass included. Glass can't be picked up curbside. Most people throw it away. In order to be able to kind of save some of those items that don't need to go to the trash, I think we're gonna need to do some smaller collection sites in Goldendale, maybe the outskirts of Goldendale. White Salmon actually does one every year. Used to be called the Pride. Can't remember the name of it. Ruby chirped in there. But now it's the Community Plan, and they have a lot of partners that are involved, from the Chamber to the mayors to all kinds of businesses, and they really have it down pat. And I am gonna be on that for this May, and I'm excited to get a good understanding of how they make that work, so that way in the future, we can do that in Goldendale. But we will need the support of the businesses and the support of the Chamber and the support of you guys and the mayors and all of the citizens, because it's gonna take community assistance to get something like that done. If there's something that you guys see that you would like to have as part of the programs, we would love to hear about it so that we can put that in the grant application. That's about all I've got, Ruby.
Oh, so the kind of...
Kevin's raising his hand. He must have a question for you.
Okay.
Kevin?
All right.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, sorry. I was still on mute. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. I promised myself I was not gonna talk that much tonight. However, I am a solid waste person. By that, I mean by trade and by education with the Army Corps of Engineers. And I have a lot of questions. I can run off three. I don't expect you to answer, but like Island County, basically with the island, they run a, their own little thrift store. Trash comes in and they set it to the side, and they actually make a little extra money. And when, let's say, the city or the school gets rid of old computers, they delete everything on it and turn around, and that's part of their recycling. And for, between us and White Salmon and the rest, we might be able to have a nice little thrift store and provide one extra job or make a little extra money. Two, we all know that people aren't real great about cleaning up their yards. Some people are still dumping oil on the street or in their yards, which as an environmentalist, it's bad thing. Three, community outreach. I know down in Chella Valley, which yes, I am still here, Mayor, they have an entire organization that the federal government pays for, and I'm not expecting us to figure this one out, but they do have a lot of slides, and they start with community outreach at the elementary school level to teach them how to clean things. And, you know, it's one hour a year for class, maybe twice a year for students, just to get them in the role, because I guarantee you, which I learned in the Navy when the Navy swapped over and I was the ASMAT coordinator. Yeah, I'm talking way too much. I'm sorry, guys. I promised I wouldn't do that, and I'm lying. Fighting with people that are stuck in their ways is almost impossible, and you just have to keep these in their heads. And then the last thing is, I realize it's federal government property, but before I quit, I was not able to fix everything at John Day Dam, and that was two years ago. We have problems on both sides of the river, including a super possible superfund site on the North Shore that you can actually see from space. Have you guys made any effort to work with the dam? And on that, those are my four or five questions. I think it would be better served if you would call me at home, because we could be on the phone for four hours about this. But that's just my suggestion. Sorry.
So Kevin, just to address it really quickly, if you could send me an email, my email is ruby, I, R-U-B-Y, I, at clickattackcounty.org. If you could, if you wanna send me an email, we could definitely set up a time to address those questions and to talk about that. So just to talk about our program a little bit, before COVID hit, we did have some that had been created specifically for our school districts here in Clickatet County, and we had just gotten into some of the schools and we're working on getting into some of the other classrooms for elementary, middle, and middle school. And then, of course, when COVID hit, everything got shut down, and we just haven't been able to recover yet in order to get back into the classroom, because the classroom doesn't look like it did a year ago. So we still have to kind of address that and switch that up as soon as we figure out what that looks like for our school districts, but we are definitely open to, you know, anybody in the school district that would really like to have some of the education that we can bring to their classroom. It does meet a lot of the different science schools and life science schools, so we have that. And of course, you know, with the fair gone, or at least the fair having been canceled for last year, we weren't able to meet that need of being at the fair and educating people on hazardous waste and recycling and stuff like that. But Michelle has been able to come up with a really good standby for the fair, and she put that out this last year, and a lot of people actually participated, which was really cool. Also, we've done art contests, which will be more up here in 2021. You'll see a little bit more involvement in terms of our programming and our education. We definitely want to do a little bit more outreach. We have a new litter crew supervisor, so he's back out with the juvenile and adult probation, so hopefully you see him around quite a bit. And then, I think with just solid waste in general, I think that, you know, sometimes you guys have questions. Sometimes, you know, somebody has a really good idea on what we might be able to do with some recycling. For example, with glass, we all know that it's very heavy and it's very recyclable. So those two kind of cancel each other out in terms that we have to send the glass two hours away to Portland, which if we're gonna start talking about carbon and that carbon footprint, the greenhouse gases, it kind of cancels the other one out, right? So why would you recycle something that is going to actually put more out into the environment than it would if you were to just throw it away? And I know people don't like hearing that. So we really need to start thinking about the carbon footprint of some of the stuff that we do. I personally, I personally don't like recycling. The only thing that I put into the blue bag is aluminum and plastic bottles, but the plastic bottles I plan on doing something like, right? So the aluminum is something you can recycle over and over and over again. So that's just me personally, but I can see people's attraction to being able to recycle some of the stuff they use. Unfortunately, we're in an environment now where we have to change some of our behaviors, some of our shopping behaviors, and really make that connection and that commitment to what it is that we wanna do in the future. Do we wanna continue to put the stuff on the shelves that, you know, or the containers that we can't recycle, or, you know, do we kind of change that process up a little bit in terms of plastic? Like, that's a really big hot topic right now. And I just think that, you know, if you're gonna buy plastic, then prepare to throw it in the trash, because as long as it's in the landfill, we know where it's at. When it's not in the landfill and we think it's getting recycled, it doesn't necessarily wind up as a second material. It winds up in the ocean. So those are some really robust conversations that we would like to have with the community and really try to figure out which direction we're gonna go with that. And because we have a contract, we have to be real sensitive to that as well. So, you know, anyway, we'd like to put that out there, that we would definitely like to start having more conversations with you and the community, and we are at your guys' service. I don't want to say disposal, but we are certainly at your service. Last, we are in the process of doing our management plan. Everything is good to go. We have a couple of revisions that we need to make in the Contamination Reduction Outreach Plan, which is the CROP. But once that is taken care of and it gets okay to buy the previous SWAC, then we can move forward to, you know, be done with it. So the city of Goldendale and the city of Benjen and White Salmon, and plus the Board of Commissioners here in Clickatet County should have the resolution by the end of the month in order to agree to the solid waste management plan. So if anybody's interested in a really long read or what we've done and where we're going in terms of solid waste, you're more than welcome to look it up and read it. It's on our solid waste webpage, which is on the Clickatet County webpage, so you can find us there. We also have a Facebook page. We have Instagram, which I don't really know too much about, but we have different social medias. We also have constant contacts. We have an email sign up if you guys want to be involved in what we're doing. And yeah, so that's what I got. Any questions, any comments, concerns, or?
Ruby, I'll get ahold of you tomorrow. I didn't have time to write down your email, but I can, I know I can find it. Not that hard. But thank you. And once again, if you have any issues environmental wise, just find me on the city council, Larry, the mayor, or Connie can find me. Not that they wanna talk to me, but we can, we can work through that. And like I said, I don't wanna go much further, because this is gonna be a long conversation.
Right, right.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You betcha, you betcha.
Thank you, Ruby and Michelle. We look forward to a good partnership. Cooperation always works best between county and city, and we'll do whatever we can to help you just, so we hope we'll see you often and work together very well. Thank you very, very much for this presentation.
You're welcome. So I'll get with Connie, and I'll get on a regular schedule, and I'm thinking maybe right now, every other month is probably doable.
Very good.
If you guys need, you know, something more, like we're willing to put ourselves out there for that. But I don't know, I think every other month is a pretty good schedule. What do you think?
Good. That'd be good. A very interesting presentation, too.
Okay.
Thank you both. Yes, thank you. We'll go on now to department reports, and we'll begin with Goldendale Police Department, Chief Jay Huntsleker.
Thank you, Mayor. I will add two things. One, you've already got introduced to Officer Mark Scott. He's blending in very well up there. He's very personable, so he's gonna work out very good. The other announcement I have is, we had a open sergeant's position, and I had civil service put together and oral board, had four officers apply, and they went through a interview with myself. And today I made a decision, and based on all scores and the totality of everything put together, from the oral board to my interview to knowing the officers, my choice was I promoted Corporal Leo Lucatero to the rank of sergeant, which is effective today. So that's all I have, but he's gonna be a good asset.
That'd be great. Thank you, thank you. We'd like to welcome Leo on such a good step, too. Thank you. From the Goldendale Fire Department, Noah, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Noah.
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to talk about the fire we had. Let me see. It was Friday, February 20th, on the 100 block of Redwood Street. It was a pretty long fire. Probably a lot of people seen it. So the page went out at 17:14, and it looks like all fire units were back at 23:38, so almost midnight there. We had short staff that night. It was a Friday night. You know, we're all volunteers, so we had some people out of town and whatnot. And at first, the first truck went en route with only three firefighters on it. Right off the bat, they paged out Rural Seven and Centerville for mutual aid, and they both sent out numerous vehicles and personnel, helped out a lot. And they were actively fighting the fire, putting water on the fire for three to four hours. They did this for several reasons. Due to the construction of the building and the decomp of the roof, couldn't get onto the roof, and they decided to do an offensive attack, excuse me, defensive attack, which they're gonna go on the outside, spray water into the building, which sometimes is effective. Sometimes where this was at, more in the attic, caused them to take a little more time to get the fire out. All in all, they did, they did great. I wanna thank Rural Seven, Centerville, the Goldendale Police Department. Officer Stelges was there. He actually reported the fire to dispatch. He was there assisting the fire, cruising, did an awesome job. I wanna thank the mayor and Larry. They did, I gave them a call. I was in Yakima at the time, and I came, I came back and took over command and did all that stuff, but I called Larry and the mayor, and they came down and seen firsthand what the fire scene was like, and really, really appreciate it, and they got to see some good stuff there. So with that being said, that's all I've got for that one.
Thank you, Noah. Did you have other things?
Nope, that's it.
Well, it was good. It was a great experience, I think, for Larry and I. For me, I had never had a chance to go to an actual fire, the fire department there fighting, so that was something very new and exciting for me. And your volunteers in all three of those agencies are absolutely terrific. It's something you can really admire in people, is the way they volunteer and where they volunteer. And you've got a great, great group. Goldendale's very, very lucky to have all three, your fire department, Rural Seven, and all the help we get from Centerville. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Noah. Do we have someone on the line for Public Works? Doug or Andy?
I don't see them.
I don't believe they're on.
No.
Okay, we'll go on. Connie, do you have anything from your department?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll go now to council business. We have quite a bit due tonight. The first item is an agreement with WSDOT to improve the Simcoe Drive approach. The agreement will be under separate cover, and Larry will begin with that one.
Okay. Well, we were hoping that the WSDOT would be able to put, bring forth an agreement under separate cover, but in a conversation I had with them late this afternoon, they were not ready with the agreement, and they did give us some extra time. In the beginning, they said the deadline is the fourth day of March, which would have been Thursday, and I suggested to them that could we, could we hold off and still make the deadline if we got it in by the 8th of, 8th of March? And she indicated that from her vantage point, that she could make that work, and that will give us, give the council more time to review the agreement ahead of us asking for it to be, asking for the mayor to be authorized to sign the agreement. So what we suggested doing in light of the fact that they didn't have the agreement ready to go, was to have a special meeting on the 8th of March at 7:00 to do at least the one thing, which would be to consider and take action on whether or not we would participate in the paving project for the intersection with Highway 97 and Simcoe Drive. So we'd like to request that the council table the action here and post- The agreement will be under separate cover and Larry will begin with that one.
Okay. Well, we were hoping that the WSDOT would be able to bring forth an agreement under separate cover, but in a conversation I had with them late this afternoon, they were not ready with the agreement. And they did give us some extra time. In the beginning, they said the deadline is the fourth day of March, which would have been Thursday. And I suggested to them that could we hold off and still make the deadline if we got it in by the eighth of March? And she indicated that from her vantage point, that she could make that work and that will give us, give the council more time to review the agreement ahead of us asking for it to be, asking for the mayor to be authorized to sign the agreement. So what we suggested doing in light of the fact that they didn't have the agreement ready to go was to have a special meeting on the eighth of March at seven o'clock to do at least the one thing, which would be to consider and take action on whether or not we would participate in the paving project for the intersection with Highway 97 and Simcoe Drive. So we'd like to request that the council table the action here and postpone it till March 8th at a special session.
Thank you, Larry. Does the council concur?
Yeah, I concur.
Yes.
Shannon, Julie, Lauren?
I said I concur.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
This is Julie. I agree. Thank you.
This is Lauren. That works for me.
Very good. We'll have this item on the special meeting on the eighth of March. Is that right, Larry?
Eighth of March.
Eighth of March at seven o'clock. Thank you all. The next item is the municipal employees' union contract. And Larry will present that.
Okay, attached with your packet is a copy of, the final clean copy of the collective bargaining agreement with local 1533G municipal employees. This contract has been ratified by the employees and they have duly executed it on their side, which is found on page 38 of the agreement. And basically, this establishes an updated pay plan, minor changes in comp time accrual, clothing and boot allowance, a health plan, and longevity schedule, and then the 2% COLA. So we've been working hard on this for a number of months and the attorney has reviewed the documents presented to you tonight. And we are ready for adoption and authorization of the mayor to execute this agreement. And we would recommend that the council make that motion.
Thank you, Larry.
This is Lauren. I moved to approve that.
I will second. Let's get this out of the way, these four guys.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute the collective bargaining agreement with local 1533G municipal employees, effective January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2023. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Were you able to follow the votes? All right.
I didn't hear Lauren, but...
He made the motion.
He made the motion.
Oh, that's right.
He's got it. And Julie, too. Thank you. And that item passes and we appreciate the cooperation and the efforts that everybody has made in working with this issue. The next item is the event committee recommendation regarding our tourism funding. And that group met last week and Larry's going to report on that and the decisions made.
Okay, the event committee met last week as the mayor indicated. And we heard presentations from each one of the applicants. There were a total of four applicants. And they submitted applications and requested funding for $48,500. The recommended budget was $40,000. And that $40,000 was based on an estimate of last year's ending cash balance, which actually came in about $41,000 when the actual numbers came in. So it's pretty much in line with what was budgeted and recommended for award, for the funding for the awards on this, on these tourism applications. So the presentations were made and the tourism committee, the event committee deliberated and recommended that the four events be funded and awarded money to the tune of $42,000. And on the page right after the agenda bill, we have the event committee recommendation for 2021 tourism events. So the Brighter Goldendale Christmas Committee requested $4,000. The recommendation was $3,000. Goldendale Motorsports Association was, would be putting on two events, the Community Days Show and Shine and the Concourse Day Maryhill down at the Maryhill Museum. They requested $8,000 and it was, they were recommending an award of $7,000. Farmers Market was requested 1,500 and it was, recommendation was to award them $1,000. And Goldendale Chamber of Commerce was a $35,000 request, which we funded, recommended funding at $31,000 for a total of $42,000. The other thing that was discussed, which I'll suggest we have, and we can have future discussions on this, but the event committee at least, for now, indicated that because of the lack of funding, because in years past, we've been funded anywhere from 55, $50 to $55,000, and this year is only $4,000. So we had to do some, there was some cutting that had to be made and there was some realization and just not as many applications were sent in. So Community Days, at this point, and this can be up for discussion, but we feel it's, parades have worked in the past, so we won a Community Days with a parade. And then in order to encourage social distancing and so forth, we felt like an outdoor car show would be an event that could be promoting outside and not, and being able to keep the six-foot distancing and wear masks if you want to, rather than having it close quarters and crowded area around in the, on the courthouse lawn. So that's kind of what we're thinking about, is to have a parade and then have the car show at that, during that time. If the, if the school reunions still wanted to go on, that would be totally up to those groups if they want to continue to do that. So with that, I'll stop talking and indicate that the next, this recommendation is being presented to the full council. And the event committee has recommended that the tourism events be funded up to $42,000. And further, that we begin, that we prepare a resolution to make that award official and that we present, or prepare, excuse me, the agreements with the four applicants for the next council meeting.
Council, do you have questions or comments?
My only question is, I am completely for this. I'm all about the community. But if, what we learned last year is we don't know what's going to happen. If events end up getting canceled, what happens to the money? That's my only question.
Well, if events get canceled, it kind of depends on when they're canceled, because some of the entities are relying upon that money to do some advertising ahead of time. For instance, the car show, they like to advertise ahead of time to encourage people to come to Goldendale and to stay overnight and to show their cars. So they may have some advance advertising already taking place. So we would still reimburse them for that advertising. If for some reason we cancel the parade, too, then there really isn't much savings of money there. The Farmers Market went ahead and worked. I think they were open like 17 days out of 24 or 25. So we reimbursed them a few dollars for their advertising that they did. The Chamber of Commerce, actually, we supported them for, through the COVID stuff, because they still had a need for the funding to maintain and operate the visitor information center and other advertising and media, media events. So we still have some expenses depending on when it's canceled. But our hope is that we're, we're coming out of this and we can begin at least trying to move in a direction to get us back to normal.
Fantastic. So it sounds like the word is reimburse it.
Yes.
We're not putting the money up front and then we're not stuck with the bill if it doesn't get used?
Correct.
Okay. Understood. Thank you so much, Larry.
Anyone else for comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Mylan's talking.
Pardon?
Mylan's trying to talk.
Mylan, we're not hearing you. You're muted, I think.
Still can't hear him.
He's talking to somebody else.
Mylan, we're not hearing you.
Never mind.
He said never mind.
Okay. Thank you. We'll find out what Mylan was talking about later. It might not have been this issue. Do we have a motion regarding the event committee recommendations?
This is Julie. I made the motion to recommend we approve the committee's recommendations.
Thank you, Julie. Do we have a second?
This is Andy. I will stop.
It's Andy?
Uh huh.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to direct staff to prepare a resolution adopting the event committee recommendation for funding 2021 tourism events and further authorize the preparation of agreements with the four applicants by the next council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. The motion passes and we will hopefully be able to have our Community Days this year. We're going to go on to the next item on the agenda, which is resolutions. And we have the revised job descriptions for the supervisors in the Public Works Department. And Larry will present that item as well.
This is actually part of, and of the discussions we had with the union in their contract negotiations. And these job description changes were part of that. And attached are the final clean copies of the revised job descriptions, which must be adopted by ordinance. They are, it is the clean final version. It's been reviewed by our attorney and by myself. And it's ready for adoption of a resolution to make that happen.
Do we have questions or comments from the council? If not, do we have a motion and a second?
I move to adopt resolution number 715, revising job descriptions for utility maintenance supervisor and the wastewater treatment plant supervisor.
Thank you, Shannon. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 715, revising job descriptions for utility maintenance supervisor and the water, wastewater treatment plant supervisor. Any further questions or comments? If not, do we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I think we have everybody. Any opposed? If not, the motion passes and we appreciate very much the work that Larry has done on all these items, not only the job descriptions, but the union settlement as well as the tourism. It's been a quite a busy two weeks in this office, his office. The next item has to do with the 2021 budget. It's an amendment, has an ordinance for 2021 budget. And Larry, again, will present that. Larry?
Okay, this ordinance accomplishes the four cleanup items now that the union contract for the municipal employees has been approved. The pay plan, the revised pay plan that was adopted in the union contract must also be incorporated into the citywide schedule of positions and salaries. It makes permanent, number two, it makes permanent the temporary increase of 5% to the city administrator for additional duties, taken on as the, as a part of the public works director position. It increases by 2% in citywide positions and salaries for all nonrepresented employees. That would be the four people of finance administrative assistant, three, Sandy Wells, the clerk treasurer, the police chief, and the city administrator. And then finally, number four, it places Sandy Wells, who is a nonrepresented administrative assistant and a municipal employee, using the best fit approach. We inserted her into the revised pay plan for municipal employees at step I for finance administration assistant, number three. So those cleanup items should make this all a clean process and we've dotted all of our i's and crossed all of our t's. So it's ready for motion. Please.
Council, do you have questions or comments? Or do we have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 1505, amending ordinance number 1503, which is the 2021 budget and providing for a revised 2021 salary schedule and waiving the second
Do we have a second?
Julie, I'll second that.
Thank you for the second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 1505, amending ordinance number 1503, which is the 2021 budget and providing for a revised 2021 salary schedule and waiving the second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Thank you. Thank you all. We will go on now to the reports of officers and city administrator. And again, Larry Bellamy is the first one up. Thank you, Larry.
Okay, just as a reminder, on 3/8/21, which is next Monday, we are going to have a special session to review and, or, and/or take action regarding the improvements of Simcoe, the Simcoe Drive approach with the WSDOT. That's on Monday, the 8th. Just as a, by the way, important dates coming up, we also have a board of adjustment meeting that's scheduled for the third, on March 24th. And it's going to deal with a variance by the road subdivision request that's being considered at present. We're waiting now for the, for that 3/24 meeting. We will also have another variance request at that meeting and as, as well as an update to the citizen review board. So that'll be all happening on the 24th of March. Then I did talk with Doug earlier today and he said that it appears that the snow is done falling, hopefully. So they're going to get out there and try to do some sweeping and get that sweeper out and try to clear up the red rock. They're going to be working on that this weekend. It's, they're having to kind of cobble it through so that, that will last through the season and still be effective for use for the rest of this year until we can get a new sweeper coming in that we're going to order later on this summer. And so by saying that, I also want to make... And so by saying that, I also want to mention that I am working on the funding for the street sweeper and the back truck. And the first requirement is to have the notice of intent completed by March 18th. So I'm putting all that paperwork together so we can have funding distributed by June 2nd, and hopefully delivery of the piece of equipment soon thereafter. So that funding is in play. We're also working on the funding package for the wastewater treatment plant improvements. And right now, we're working on these community development block grant funding and opportunity. Then we also had a infrastructure, a federal infrastructure program through Senator Murray's office that I was working on for the mayor. And that's another infrastructure possibility for funding of this project. So again, we're trying to put all that funding package together. We'll know more later this, later this spring or summer. Let's see. And I think that's about it.
Good. Thank you, Larry. Good report. We'll now hear from our council members, who will begin with Andy Hall.
Mayor, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Shannon? Milton?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Mylan Walling?
No, I'm good.
Mylan's good as well. Kevin Feig?
Absolutely nothing.
This is a windfall.
I could read off all Lauren's complaints if you'd like.
The next person is Lauren. Lauren, do you have things that you want to report?
No, I don't have anything.
Julie?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to do this tonight either.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We appreciate the hard work you did in going through this agenda. There's a lot of decisions to make, and we were successful in all of those, and that's quite an accomplishment. Under the mayor's item, under Report of Officers, we're working on a policy to open our meetings, for in-person meetings. We, hopefully, by the time you have your next special meeting of the city council, we'll have a draft there for you to read and consider. It's a very short statement, but it will provide us with the opportunity to meet in person and to be able to provide, at least telephone and Zoom to the public so they can listen and hear and be able to be a part of all of this, if it's required that way. And we'll be sending out that draft whenever the legal side of our administration clears it. And that's all I have. The next item is public comment. If you're on the line to make a public comment, please do so, unlimited to three minutes if possible. Do we have public comment?
Nobody's unmuting.
Okay.
Doesn't look like it.
I think we're okay. But then?
Pardon me?
I just said it's easy meeting, then.
Not so easy, but a lot of work. Thanks, Kevin. If not, we need a motion to adjourn city council.
So I move. Maybe I'll second that.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for all your hard work tonight. Thank you very much. The meeting is closed. Good night.